Okay, good morning, everybody. Call this public meeting to order. I'd like to ask Rich Cholendorn to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cholendorn is currently serving as the Commander of the American Legion post nine twenty America, American in Scranton. He served in the Navy for 20 years from 1984 to 2004, was a Navy Hospital Corpsman, and retired as a Chief Petty Officer E7, and he currently lives in West Scranton. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only.
Suzanne Green from Benton Township, Lackawanna County. I would like to address the accounts payable. It appeared from last week and this week that the electronic funds transfer have been summarized instead of specifically each transaction. It does not appear to be detailed on the accounts payable. If that, if I'm reading it accurately, if I'm not, kindly let me know, but if I am reading it accurately, could you kindly provide a detailed listing of every electronic fund transfer? From last week, it appeared to be 40 transactions. This week is 40 transactions, a total of $6.5 million. So if you could please itemize that, thank you.
Will you give me a list of the whole?
That's.
Thank you. You provide it all the time as you write.
And that's, and that's there. That's on the agenda.
Should be the way it always is.
Yeah.
Put the complete list.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board on agenda items only? Okay, thank you. First up, we have a proclamation today declaring the month of April 2025 to be Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in Lackawanna County. I'd like to ask our Office of Youth and Family Services Director Carrie Browning to come up, and before she speaks with other representatives from the office, I'd like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas child abuse and neglect are a serious problem impacting every segment of our community, and whereas our children are our most valuable resource, and they will shape the future of Lackawanna County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and whereas child abuse can have lifelong psychological, emotional, and physical consequences for victims, and whereas the collaborative efforts of the Office of Youth and Family Services, the Children's Advocacy Center of NEPA, the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office, and law enforcement from all Lackawanna County jurisdictions will continue making strides to reduce or eliminate abuse risks and to promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And now therefore, we, Bill Gohin and Chris Chermack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Lackawanna County, and I'll turn it over to our OYFS Director Carrie Browning.
Thank you. Good morning. Today, the Office of Youth and Family Services stands with members of the Lackawanna County Multidisciplinary Team, which include the Children's Advocacy Center. Our other members, including the District Attorney's Office and local law enforcement who are planning to attend, are actually in a forensic interview at the center right now and couldn't be here. The Multidisciplinary Team, or MDT, model is a critical approach to responding to child abuse cases. It ensures that children only need to tell their story once by bringing together professionals from various fields: child welfare, law enforcement, medical and mental health providers, prosecutors, and victim advocates. Each agency works together to provide a coordinated response that prioritizes the safety, well-being, and healing of the child. A key player in this model is the Children's Advocacy Center of Northeastern Pennsylvania, which provides a child-centered environment where children can be interviewed in a safe and supportive setting. This collaborative response strengthens our ability to protect children, deliver justice, and offer the resources necessary for their recovery. Members of the Special Victims Unit meet weekly, and the larger MDT meets monthly to discuss cases and analyze the common themes that lead to child abuse. These themes help guide the work in the community to increase awareness about child abuse and promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families. Thank you.
Thank you. And do you want to let us know who these two?
Go ahead. Please, please.
Hi, I'm Ashley Sikachi. I'm the Program Direct Manager at the Children's Advocacy Center.
Great, thank you.
I'm Megan Gagorick. I'm the Director at the Children's Advocacy Center.
Thank you. And I just want to thank you and Carrie Browning, all the work that you've done, all the work that the staff has done in our Office of Youth and Family Services, from where, at least from my perspective, where we started in 2024 and where we are today. We are, have made so many strides in improving the overall agency, and that is because of the caseworkers, it's because of Carrie Browning, it's because of the supervisors, all the people that literally put their lives on the line every day. I've said this before, I consider them to be first responders, although they don't have that title necessarily. I went out on the road with a caseworker last year just to get a sense of kind of what they see and what they go through. It was an eye-opening, humbling experience. I got home and literally grabbed my children, hugged them, and kissed them because of some of the things that I saw, only in a three- to four-hour period. But yet, they do that every day, every day, 24 hours a day, and they don't stop, and they protect our children here in the county, and you all do such a wonderful job, so thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to come up, we'll take a picture with the proclamation. Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Justin.
Hi.
I should take the picture.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Before we get started with the regular meeting, last year, we had an initiative that I had pushed forward along with help from a lot of people within county government, and it's called the Digital Budget Book. And I'd like to just take two or three minutes to present it, if you wouldn't mind looking up at that screen. I just want to explain what it is and why I think it's so important. So today marks a major step forward in our commitment to transparency, accountability, and modernization in county government. I'm very, very, very proud today to unveil Lackawanna County's first-ever digital budget book, a tool that will transform how we share and manage public information. I have to thank our Communications Director, Pat McKenna, our Digital Media Coordinator, Kristin O'Malley, who spent countless hours constructing the digital budget book, along with our CFO, Dave Bolzoni, and we had two interns who played a pivotal role in putting all this information together, Avery McGergan and Estella DeJesus, who did a lot of the preliminary work. For too long, the county's annual budget has existed as a static and often overwhelming document for anyone who's ever taken a look at it. It's been difficult to navigate, hard to interpret, and in many cases, inaccessible to the average taxpayer. Well, that changes today. With this new platform that we'll take you through in a minute, residents and officials alike can now easily explore the county's budget in a clear, user-friendly, digital format. Whether you're a concerned citizen or consider yourself a policy expert, this tool will allow you to search specific topics, compare figures over time, and understand how your tax dollars are being spent, all with just a few clicks. This innovation comes at a time when our county continues to face serious financial challenges, and in times like these, the need for openness and smart decision-making becomes even more urgent. The digital budget book gives us a real opportunity to improve everyone's understanding of how county government works and ensure that every dollar is tracked with integrity. This is about more than technology. It's about giving all of you the tools that you deserve to stay informed. We're making this budget a living document for the people of Lackawanna County, and let this be the first of many steps we take to bring the county government into the 21st century. Now, if you look at the screen, and you can access this on the county's website, there will be a ticker that goes across the top of the webpage where you'll be able to click on it, but it is also housed under our Revenue and Finance Department. But you'll notice that there is a budget message, and I have to give a lot of credit to our Communications Director and our CFO. The budget message, the budget highlights are between 15 and 20 pages, so there is an awful lot of explanation that was put into this. So if you remember, if you've ever looked at past county budgets, it really was just numbers on a page, and before our CFO got here, there really wasn't ever an explanation of what was going on. If you'll click now, Alicia, on the budget highlights for the general fund. So this is what I was speaking about, and if you want to scroll down a little bit, this is all of the explanation of what the highlights were from last year's budget: revenue, expenditures, trends. So all of the things that, if you, if there was any questions, all of the answers are now in this document with a very, very clear understanding. Now, the part that I really, really think will be beneficial is if Alicia clicks on the department summary, and we'll use the Office of Youth and Family Services as an example. So when you click on that, it has every single department and county government. Office of Youth and Family Services is an example, which is timely because Carrie Browning was just here. It gives you what the department's 2024 budget was and what the '25 budget: any major changes, how many employees, what projects that were undertaken in '24, and then, and you can click on this and actually make it bigger, or download it and make it bigger, an organizational chart that shows you how the department is managed and what the employees' titles are and how that's all broken down. Now, if you click on the arrow there next to Youth and Family Services, there's a dropdown menu where you'll be able to look at revenue and expenses, not just numbers on a page, but these are graphs that will be very helpful for people to understand. It goes back to 2021 in this document, but very easy for people to understand where the historical trends have gone in terms of revenues and expenditures, and if you continue to scroll down. And especially, I was saying this to somebody this morning, as a new Commissioner, so I'm not just thinking of myself, Commissioner Chermack, or whoever else gets seated here, whoever else comes in here in the future now will be able to really analyze the budget and have a true understanding of how county government works. So this is open to the public. Every department is detailed here, and if there are any questions, all you have to do is reach out to our CFO and our Revenue and Finance Department. But this is how the budget will look now moving forward. The great thing about this as well is there is a PDF portion of this, so you can actually print this out or print portions of it out if you wanted to focus on one specific department. And then, Alicia, if you just want to click on the prison, I think that's up a little So same thing, there's Tim Betty, he's got a cool, cool shades on there. But again, this is great. In the past, if you looked at the prison's budget, you would, there's no explanation to it. Everything is explained in this document, the why behind why if revenue went up, if it went down, if expenditures went up, if it went down. It's all here for everyone to view. This is especially important because of what we had to do last year and what we inherited in terms of the financial disaster that was county government. We're still in a tough financial situation, it's getting better, but now people will be able to be more informed on why we have to make some of the decisions that we have to make. And Dave, do you want to speak to anything on this or add a comment? Or, come on up. So I, again, I have to thank Mr. Bolzoni, Pat McKenna, Kristin O'Malley, our interns. A lot of people put a lot of work into this, and we're very proud of them.
And only a brief comment, I think you covered pretty much all of it, Commissioner, but what I will add is this was an incredibly, incredibly laborious process. And as you pointed out, much of the effort that had gone into it from both Pat and Kristin, I think, was exceptional, and they deserve some thanks for being diligent and staying with it. Again, it was quite a process. It is an ongoing process, so we'll see further refinement as the year goes along, and obviously, you know, we certainly will begin the process with the 2026 budget once we get into mid-year. Again, it is quite an undertaking, but I think it should be received well because, as you pointed out, there is a lot of information for people to digest.
Right, thank you. And just a final note, what I've been trying to stress for the last two years is that county government is a very, very large bureaucracy. There's over 30 departments, there's over 30 boards, commissions, and authorities. There's a lot of money, taxpayer money, that's spent on a lot of really, really important services that we have to deliver to the people of the county. This document will allow people to have a better understanding of how those funds are spent and the job that we're doing as county commissioners, because we're trying to be as transparent as we possibly can. So, thank you. Okay, first up is Ordinance 25-0096.
Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of Ordinance 298. It's an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million, to provide funds for a certain project of the county which consists of any or all of the following: a design, acquisition, construction, renovation, improvement, and installation, furnishing, and equipping of improvements and/or additions to the county's facilities or properties, including but not limited to street paving and improvements, bridge repairs and improvements, traffic control systems and equipment, flood mitigation projects, municipal building renovations and improvements, roof repairs and replacements, technology and information improvements, and equipment acquisition, energy savings projects, and the acquisition of municipal equipment, additional capital projects of the county to the extent approved by the Board of Commissioners of the county, the current refunding of the county's outstanding general obligation note series 2023, funding capitalized interest on the bonds, and paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the bonds. Whereas, the county has determined to accept the proposal of Raymond James &amp; Associates, Incorporated as representative of itself, and NW Financial Group, LLC, for the purchase of the bonds. Now therefore being enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the Board hereby authorizes and directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to be designated generally as County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2025. The Board determines that the debt to be incurred pursuant to this ordinance, which will be evidenced by the bonds, shall be non-electoral debt of the county. The Board shall and does hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the bonds in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance. Each series of the bonds, when issued, will be a general obligation of the county. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dunmore, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. All expenses incurred in connection with the issuance of the bonds shall be paid out of the proceeds derived from the issuance of the bonds. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and separately to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and the sale of the bonds and the financing of the project duly enacted and ordained this 16th day of April 2025 by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania in lawful session duly assembled. Mr. Chairman, to speak upon that is the CFO of Lackawanna County, Mr. Dave Bolzoni.
Morning.
And good morning again, and speak briefly, I will, in this case, as opposed to the last meeting. I just want to cover in summary what the three components of this ordinance are: a refunding or refinance of an approximate $11.9 million interim or short-term note that was issued to Fidelity Bank in December 2023. This note funded Phase One of the Capital Projects Initiative. The note matures in June 2025, hence the refinance that we're looking at. A rate modification of the $14.225 million note issued to Fidelity Bank in December 2023 to fund the other component of projects in Phase One, and as you're well aware, the projects were numerous and they were very diverse. This note was issued for 20 years, the rate will be reduced from its current 5.3976 to 4.75, which approximates a bond rate. And then ultimately, the third component is the issuance of a short-term note in the approximate amount of $17 million to fund all of the projects that are included in Phase Two of this Capital Projects Initiative, consisting principally of roads and bridges. And as you're well aware from the presentation last week, a number of those bridges have been closed due to conditional issues. This note will mature in two years, and as we're also well aware, we are looking at other funding opportunities to support Phase Two that may wind up reducing the amount that gets refinanced in two years. I will add that a number of residents in the affected boroughs within Lackawanna County and townships as well will be very appreciative of this undertaking, as will I, of course, and I look forward to your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni?
Dave, just a clarification, if you don't mind. You indicated that 11.9 is going to be done in the form of a bond, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that the $17 million or so is going to be a short-term borrowing at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. We still, in the ordinance, it still says not to exceed $35 million. Is that just with regard to the bond issue, or is that with regard to the whole financing?
The maximum amount, and Brian, if you'd like to, to address the ordinance content, it would be helpful.
That $35 million does include all of those pieces, so it's the refinancing and the new money. And the reason why it's a little bit larger than what you're going to actually borrow is as a parameters resolution, the state approves an annual debt service amount. So to give you the flexibility in pricing this issue when the underwriters are ready to go, we don't want to have any of those years be too close, so they build in a cushion in each of those. After we do the issue, all we do is send a letter to the state saying, this is what we actually issued, here's our final debt service.
Brian, I appreciate that, and I do understand that. My concern is that we're only issuing bonds in the amount of $11.9 million, but the ordinance, I believe, still says $35 million not to exceed as a bond issue.
The refunding is 11.9, there's also the new money, additional $17, $18 million.
But that is not, that is not through the issuance of bonds, is that correct?
Yes, it is. Well, it's going to, it's going to be called a bond, it's going to be done as a bank loan. It's just nomenclature from the state, it doesn't... To refinance the existing note, you have to go from a note to a bond because you're stretching out that maturity, so it will be called a bond even though it's going to be a bank loan.
But it is going to be a bank loan that can be repaid at any time as additional funds may become available.
Exactly. And it will have a two-year maturity on it, so whatever funds become available, we'll either reduce that refinancing amount or we'll be refinancing it in two years.
All right, thank you very much.
And keep in mind, and keep in mind, Solicitor, that that was the reason for doing this as a separate transaction. So the original discussion was to combine the funding for Phase Two into the bond issue, but it was determined that the better approach that would be acceptable to the Commissioners would be to do Phase Two as a separate transaction because we're trying to secure additional dollars to maybe reduce what that refinance might be in two years.
And I appreciate that, Dave.
doing this as a separate transaction. So the original discussion was to combine the funding for Phase 2 into the bond issue. But it was determined that the better approach that would be acceptable to the commissioners would be to do Phase 2 as a separate transaction because we're trying to secure additional dollars to maybe reduce what that refinance might be in two years.
And I appreciate that, Dave, and I appreciate your clarification. I just wanted to make sure that since the original ordinance still said not to exceed $35 million as a bond issue, I didn't want there to be any confusion on the part of the public or on the part of anybody participating in this, that the bond portion is 11.9 and the conventional refinancing is the 17 million.
And I think Brian explained that as well as possible. We are talking about the Commonwealth Local Government Unit Debt Act. You would just include confusion in that discussion. But in any event, Brian explained it as clearly as anyone possibly could. And he's absolutely correct. It really does come down to nomenclature.
I agree, and I think he did a great job explaining it. Thanks.
And the ordinance had always built in that flexibility to convert any piece of this to a bank loan if it made sense or do it all as a publicly offered bond issue. So we didn't have to change anything in the ordinance from when we went to that additional approach of doing the two-year deal. It already had that flexibility in there. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, just to restate what I had said last week, I appreciate all the work that's been put into this plan. It's going to finally address the roads and bridges throughout Lackawanna County, which, as everyone is well aware, are in critical condition and long overdue for attention. We have 35 miles of roads in Lackawanna County that need to be taken care of and also 154 bridges. Through the careful financial planning that Brian and Dave has spoken about and the use of long-term capital financing, we are able to make these crucial investments without placing any additional burden on the taxpayers of Lackawanna County. But we have to do this because we can't afford to wait until a bridge collapses before we act. And as I said last week, and I'll reiterate again today, deferred maintenance leads to higher costs. It leads to safety risks and it leads to loss opportunities. So as the old saying goes, you fix the roof while the sun is shining, and this is what we're doing today. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance has been approved. Resolution 25-0097.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 383986-384703 inclusive, totaling $3,202,775.04. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,544,784.76. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second, on the question.
On the question, Mr. Commissioner, each invoice paid by the Controller's Office as final approval, whether it be by check or by electronic funds transfer, is listed here on this document in front of you as always. So we would never list just a total without everything in detail. And copies of this can be picked up at the Controller's Office or anyone can call with any questions.
And I think it's also listed on the, if you click on the agenda, it's also there on the, if you go on the internet. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0089.
Certifying the matching state funds to the County of Lackawanna Transit System. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolved and certified that it will provide the County of Lackawanna Transit System, COLTS, local funds in the amount of $1,017,238 to match state funds provided pursuant to 74 PACS Section 1513 of fiscal year '25 through '26. Furthermore, the Board of Commissioners resolves and certifies that the required amount of local matching funds will be provided no later than at the end of the state fiscal year, June 30, 2026. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Finance for COLTS, Mr. Michael Dancheck.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. This funding represents a 5% increase from last year's ask that we had, and it is vital funding for us as far as our operating expenditures. Goes towards paying for our parts, our maintenance of our buses, our fuel, and our insurance. So this is just vital funding for us. So we expect that this funding will go up approximately 5% year-over-year. So we thank you for having us today. On behalf of COLTS, thank you for being great partners and advocates of public transit. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dancheck?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0091.
Entering into a cooperative agreement with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a cooperative agreement with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority to accept the grant funding for the Lackawanna Heritage Disc Golf Course at McDade Park. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Paul Bechtel.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here for approval to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for a heritage-based or themed disc golf course at McDade Park. And this grant is for $4,310, and it will be in addition to additional money we received through the Pocono Forest and Waters Conservation Landscape Mini-Grant last year for $5,000. And we also received 10 pallets of pavers donated from Liberty Stone Hardscaping Systems in Archbold, which will be the base we use for the tee boxes. So we think it's an important improvement to McDade Park, and this will be the first disc golf course in Lackawanna County. And we hope it's going to tie in with the heritage theme to what we already offer with the Coal Mine Tour and the Anthracite Museum that is currently there.
Thank you very much. I have to thank Paul Bechtel. If you don't know Paul, I've known Paul for a long time. He used to work for McLean and Associates and has done a ton of work on playgrounds and open spaces across Lackawanna County and beyond. But I don't know that I've ever met anybody that goes above and beyond like Director Bechtel does. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to do a walkthrough at McDade Park before the summer season starts. And there, he has made, along with Frank Stevens, the Deputy Director, so many improvements up there. And they've done most of them in-house, which is amazing. To the Coal Mine Tour, there's going to be an ADA dock at the pond, and I could go on and on and on. But this specific project, we're really excited to announce. It will be unveiled in the next few months, and it's a brand-new recreational feature at McDade Park. And as Mr. Director Bechtel said, it is the Lackawanna County's first-ever disc golf course. And I want to thank the LHVA, the Executive Director, former Commissioner Jill Corcoran, for their investment in this. For those of you who may not be familiar, disc golf is one of the, one of, if not the fastest-growing sports in the United States. Much like traditional golf, which I'm not good at, I don't know if anybody is, players aim to complete each hole in as few throws as possible, but instead of using a golf club or a golf ball, players use specially-designed discs and aim for elevated metal baskets. It's a sport that blends skill, strategy, and the outdoors, and it's suitable really for all ages and all skill levels. Across the United States, disc golf has exploded with popularity, with thousands of courses available in public parks, schools, and recreational areas. It's low cost. It's accessible. It encourages physical activity, all while fostering community through friendly competition. So we're really hopeful that this new course at McDade Park, which, as I said, will be unveiled in the next few months, not only adds that fresh recreational option for families, students, and athletes, but it also strengthens our commitment to keeping our county parks active, inviting, and forward-thinking. I think it's going to bring a lot of new visitors to McDade Park. It's going to support local tourism and provide yet another way for residents to enjoy one of, I think, one of our most beautiful public spaces in the county and probably really in our region. So we're proud to continue investing in innovative, inclusive park improvements that meet the changing needs and interests of our community. And again, I want to thank Paul Bechtel. This was his idea. I would have, I don't know anyone else who would have thought of this, but it's really going to be cool for the residents of the county, and I'm very, very proud of it. So thank you.
And I will say one thing. With the throwing of discs, we were very cognizant of the fact of the public that uses the park on a daily basis. The course itself will be more up in the wooded section between the coal mine and the soccer fields. We are, we were very cognizant of the fact of the design of it, trying to make sure we limit the amount of interaction of discs and people walking. So we're doing, we did our best as far as that goes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0092.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dunmore for the Chestnut Street Stormwater Sidewalk and Roadway Reconstruction Project, Phase 2, Part 2. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Agreement to the Borough of Dunmore for general construction purposes, Stefurski Paving Company, 3 Export Lane, Archbold, Pennsylvania, 18403, at a cost of $445,235.05. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristen Magnotta.
Good morning, Commissioners. This CDBG cooperation agreement between the county and the municipality of Dunmore is for the Chestnut Street Stormwater Sidewalk and Roadway Reconstruction Project. This approval is critical to meet the deadline of 9/25/25 for this project, and this is at no cost to the county as it uses CDBG funds.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0093.
This is entering into a cooperation agreement with Troup Borough. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Troup. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Agreement for the Troup Borough Memorial Drive Drainage Repairs Project. General construction for American Asphalt for 500 Chase Road, Shavertown, Pennsylvania, 18708, at a cost of $77,574. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Magnotta.
Thank you.
This is a CDBG cooperation agreement between the county and the municipality of Troup, as was stated, for the Memorial Drive Drainage Repairs Project at $77,574. This approval is critical to meet the project deadline of 9/25/25 again, and this is no cost to the county as it uses community development block grant funds.
Thank you very much. Any questions on this? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0094.
This is entering into a cooperation agreement with Scott Township. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby entering into a cooperation agreement with Scott Township. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby award the following Community Development Block Grant Construction Agreement for the Scott Township Senior Center Kitchen and Air Conditioner Unit renovation. It's for general construction to the Sean Byrne Construction Company, 349 North Rear Main Street, Dixon City, Pennsylvania, 18519, at a cost of $116,000. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Finally, once again, here is Director Magnotta.
Thank you, Chief. The CDBG cooperation agreement is between the county and municipality of Scott Township for the Senior Center Kitchen and Air Conditioning Renovations Project at $116,000. Again, approval is critical to meet the project deadline of 9/25/25, and this is at no cost to the county as it uses community development block grant funds again.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Okay. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0098.
So awarding the Arts and Culture Public Art Grants. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the 2025 Lackawanna County Arts and Cultural Grant Program Public Art Request in the amount of $7,500, each for Eric Bisart for the Elephant Mural at 43534 Lackawanna Avenue in Scranton, and the Archbold Borough Veterans Monument Park, No Man Left Behind Sculpture, 511 Kennedy Drive, Archbold. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marie McGuigan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, public. So this is more of our investment in beautification across Lackawanna County. So the mural will be downtown as part of the Renaissance of murals that I think make our quality of life and the city look great. But we also have another one on the other end of the county, which is working with veterans. It's their third sculpture, an original sculpture made by a local artist that will be part of Archbold Veterans Monument Park.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director McGuigan? I just want to say I'm really excited about this. I've had so many people from out of the area remark about the Jazz mural on the side of the building on Wyoming Avenue. So it does add to the downtown and to the county. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0095.
So awarding the Arts and Culture Community Events. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the following 2025 Lackawanna County Arts and Culture Community Events Request. Sponsorship for the Lackawanna County Heritage Fair in the amount of $10,000, and sponsorship for the Carbon Dalian Festival in the amount of $5,000. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McGuigan.
Thank you.
I just want to say before I tell you a little more about these, you know, the county invests in community development, but it takes our leaders in our communities to make these happen. These are all ideas from people who work hard, and I think it's great that we can help them create these great events in our community. And I mention that because the first one is the Carbon Dalian Festival up in Carbondale. So they took a very unique thing with the landing of the supposed UFO back in 1974 and built a whole festival around it. I had the opportunity to attend. It was really great. So put that on your calendar. It'll be this November. And then the other one has been going on for a few years, but it's become a very popular event, the Lackawanna County Heritage Fair.
Okay. And have any UFOs landed recently in Carbondale or anyplace else in the county?
I don't know. I could find that out. I can bring it back to the next meeting, but they're still debating that. But that's one of the fun things about the.
No, this is great. And I talked to Mayor Michelle Bannon up in Carbondale, and I think they were all really surprised at how many people came out to that and had a really great time. So they want to keep.
They really did.
Yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0099.
An appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Workforce Development Board. And Katie Patelley, Doctor of Education, President and CEO of Johnson College, sitting as the Representative of Higher Education. Term is to commence May 1, 2025, and expire April 30, 2028. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on April 16, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Before we get into public comment, our Controller, Gary DeBilio, wanted to speak for a moment on his annual audit. Gary?
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I presented to you and to the public today in accordance with the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter, the Controller's Office Annual Audit Activity Report. And this details all the work that's performed by the Controller's Office last year during 2024. It'll be on the county website. If anyone would like a hard copy, they could stop in the Controller's Office for it. And it details all the work that was performed by us last year. I'd like to acknowledge and recognize some of the staff that are here with us today, if I may. My deputy, Reggie Mariani, Elaine Kingsley, Cindy Borgna, Lindsay Holland, Terry Rizzo, Nancy Crakey, Karen McIntyre, Susan Henry, and Ella Walsh. And I just want to thank them for all the work that they do every day for the citizens of Lackawanna County. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners, staff, and residents. I'm Jennifer Mercero with, I'm a Client Relationship Manager with Penn State Extension. Today, I'm just here with a few updates on our Master Gardeners Program, our Master Watershed Steward Program, and some nutrition program updates. And I also brought with me Chrissy Pullman, who's an educator for food families and communities, and if it's okay, she'll speak next to give some more specifics on her programming. First, before I get into those, I'd like to let you know about a program that Penn State Extension offers. So far, it's been rolled out in Pike County and I believe one or two other counties. It's called the MyPI Program, and it is national, a national program, but we've recently brought this to Pennsylvania. It's a National Disaster Preparedness Program designed especially for teens. It teaches them how to be safe and help others be safe in the event of disaster. The program was successfully introduced and piloted in Pike County, PA by 4-H educator Angie Smith. Extension is working hard to bring this program to other counties, and of course, I'm looking forward to it eventually making its way to Lackawanna County. So I did send both of you a link yesterday. If you have issues with that, I can get you something in writing, if you couldn't open it.
No, it was great.
I have a few other quick updates that will highlight what we've been up to and what we have coming up. So first thing I want to do is ask your residents, make sure you're checking extension.psu.edu and Lackawanna County's Facebook page, as well as Extension's Facebook pages for updates. Our Master Gardeners have been busy with the Mr. Yuck Program. They've reached several hundred first grade students throughout Lackawanna County. I was privileged to sit in on one of these classes, and they were absolutely enthusiastic about learning about poison. We all remember getting those green Mr. Yuck stickers as kids. The next program was Stars. We painted birdhouses that is affiliated with Maureen's programming and worked along with the Master Watershed Stewards on a watershed activity. And then finally, we are wrapping up Seed to Supper Program, which increases food security, food literacy, and more. And I have sent Kristin some updates on Jill's programming with Master Gardeners. Master Watershed Stewards will be part of Earth Day at the end of the month, Lackawanna River Fest, and an invasive replacement tree planting in May. And then our nutrition programs have reached far and wide, including Boys and Girls Clubs, United Neighborhood Centers, Wright Center, Skyview and Village Apartments, Catherine McCauley Center, and so many more that I couldn't even get into. Coming up with nutrition, we have the Nutrition Link Series in English and Spanish at the Wright Center. We have Eat Right Now in collaboration with 4-H at United Neighborhood Center Summer Camp, and the Nutrition Garden Collaboration Install at St. Joseph's Mother and Infant Shelter. And I promise that barely puts a dent in what Extension is doing in your county. Thank you, as always, for your time and support that allows us to better each part of Lackawanna County, one program at a time. If Chrissy needs more time, might she start the clock over for hers?
Yeah, we could start it over when she starts speaking, sure.
She has a minute or two. Okay.
We'll give you the full five minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Pullman, and I'm an educator at Penn State Extension, Lackawanna County, and I provide programming within our Food Families and Communities Unit. So I'd just like to share a little bit about some of our programs and encourage you to reach out if you are interested in learning more. So this past year, we pushed out our new Build Your Bones Program, focusing on preventing osteoporosis and maintaining bone health. The classes are designed for individuals interested in osteoporosis prevention, those diagnosed with the condition, and their families and caregivers. Osteoporosis can lead to serious health issues, so we wanted to get the information out there. So we cover the basics of osteoporosis, healthy eating tips to maximize bone health, and fall prevention exercises. The clients of Lackawanna Blind Association benefited from this program recently, as well as the many that attended our virtual events. Additionally, we offer Walk by Faith. That is a six- or 12-month healthy eating and walking program that was developed by the Penn State Cancer Institute to help community members understand how lifestyle changes can reduce their cancer risk. So during this, it's a six-hour training. Participants work directly with Penn State educators, such as myself, to learn how to best deliver, manage, and evaluate this program for their organization. Finally, April is Financial Literacy Month, so I wanted to highlight our financial literacy programs. We teach the fundamentals of money management, and this fall, we will be offering individuals a Penn State Micro Credentials Badge, certifying their achievement for participating in these classes and learning how to manage, protect, save, and safeguard their money. So interested individuals can contact our Lackawanna County office for more information. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Sandy?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to stop by today to encourage Lackawanna County property owners to go to their local library, as library staff can help them research comparable values for their properties that are currently for sale or sold recently within the area around their property, and staff can also help you find the currently assessed values for all Lackawanna County properties. I just, there was a gentleman that came last Wednesday, the 9th, and he had said that he had difficulty finding this information. And after speaking with some of the other library directors, specifically Scott Thomas with Scranton Public Library, and also Martina Soden, who's head of reference, there are ways that the libraries can help people. So we just encourage you all to stop at your local library or contact your local library, and we'll be able to help you.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, what happened to Governor Shapiro's residents and all is hard to fathom that's happening in this country right now. You know, Trump turned around with AG Pam Bondi and getting the mills out of women's sports, which is an absurdity. They got to get them out of there. Judge Mizony, that ruled against me on the properties, put my properties in a tax sale, thought the comments I made about Joyce, his law firm, and Joyce himself, were my comments, when they were actually the comments that the Chief Justices of the Commonwealth court to his incompetence, and I'm paying the price for it. We're filing different things here. Taxes were put on my properties again. We're taking that to court because I have information why they were putting the sale again, and we'll get that in depositions. We'll get the truth of who did what. The county's into me for over $18 million for what's happened in the past, and I'm not going to stand back idly and get pushed around, especially by this officer especially. I filed my appeals to run for mayor in time. They put it in the paper that I didn't do it, that I was kicked off the ballot. That's untruthful. They received them. They just couldn't figure out what the heck they did with them. So those are issues I'm doing. Spano, when he filed against me, the judge should have filed the rule of law. He filed 2021. It should have been 2025. The juror should have not acted as his attorney. He should have dismissed his complaint completely, which is under appeal. So these are the things that I'm dealing with, and those are the reasons I'm running for mayor in Scranton as a Republican. Now, what I've done in the past week, and you were served with the Mr. Gahan, is I filed a lawsuit to the fees, to the assessment, and the 33% tax increase, because they're ridiculous. And the way they put out the fees, when you ask the question, it's an assumption. It's not factual about what you could do or not do with real estate. So we're going to get a lot of answers. The second lawsuit that I filed was against you, and you were served with it, is for you using our tax dollars to pay your legal fees to, so who's going to sit in the other seat over there against the Democrat Party? So we're going to get answers there, and we're going to back up the Democrat Party to do what they're doing, and they're doing what's right. It's been in place, and I don't think you have any choice but to accept their decisions and not spend our money to do it. So to further make sure we protected our money, I'd like to approach, if I may.
What, just give it to the solicitor, whatever it is.
What I've handed the solicitors, an injunction against you using our taxpayer dollars. You're going to represent the people in the community. You're not going to represent yourself and use our dollars. We've had issues in the past, you and I, and this time, I'm not taking anymore. My property was put in tax sales. I had to file another Chapter 13 because of what the county's doing. You're not going to get anything out of it. I went through a devastating fire that destroyed my company, and yet the county wants to play games. I'm not one that's going to sit back and be bullied or pushed around. I'm born and raised here. I've contributed. I fed people for Christmas Day for 31 years. I've donated hundreds of thousands of dollars to the people in this community, disinfecting wipes, sanitary things, plus what I'm doing all over the country right now. And I represent Scranton, Pennsylvania, when I'm doing it, because it's on my vehicles of who we are and what we're from. I don't do it to blow my own horn. I do it because I represent all of us in this community. And to have my properties put in a tax sale, again, due to the incompetence of your solicitor or your tax office, legal department is unacceptable. It's no more than unacceptable than you trying to use our money for your own personal gain here. If you want to change and get a little hush puppy next to you, then pay for it, but don't ask us or the Democrat Party to change the rules or manipulate our legal system with our justices to change the way we do business in Lackawanna County, because you just don't damn like the way it's being done, and it doesn't work to your favor. You want somebody that's going to work with you. Look next to you.
Thank you. Your time is up. Would anyone else like to?
Look next to you. That's who's going to work with you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
As you know, Mr. Gahan, the, I'm Larry Sparano.
It's Gahan. It's Gahan.
What did I say?
I don't know what you said, but it wasn't correct. Gahan. That's how you say my last name.
Gahan.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, so I won't mispronounce your name, since you're apparently sensitive about that.
No, I just wanted to make sure you pronounced it correctly. That's all.
Well, what did I say? Can you tell me?
Well, you said it right, so go ahead. Continue.
Anyway, as you know, I'm a taxpayer of Lackawanna County and an independent journalist, and since you continue to refuse to talk with me one-on-one for a still unspecified reason, I will again address my comments from the podium. Now, considering that Lackawanna County and the area has one of the highest percentages of senior citizens in the entire country, and since you have imposed a 33% tax hike all at once, not incremental, but boom, all at once, on top of a reassessment, which hasn't been done for 50 years, so it's sure to result in huge increases in assessments. Considering all that, I think you and others should seriously ponder what the end result of this may be, which could very possibly be a number of people, especially senior citizens, being driven from their homes and property, with the end result being the developers moving in. A serious question that you should consider before you proceed with this unfair, untransparent, uncomplete reassessments. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
I was just waiting for my time to change to five. Oh, okay. Okay, hi. I'm Sharon Salto-Sparano.
Good morning.
And, good morning. And I'm here today, which is a big issue for me, is the reassessment. And my issue is similar to what Larry just said about the senior citizens, and again, the fact that this is not a transparent reassessment. Now, I missed last week's meeting, unfortunately, and I heard that Pat Tobin said that there's no difference between Lackawanna County handling it versus other counties. I can tell you, and I want it on the record, that I have spoken with the chief assessors in Beaver County, Monroe County, Mercer County, Tioga County, and Schuuk Hill County. They have transparency. They have put, or the ones that are close with us, will put up all of the new valuations off of the data of, for us, Tyler, before the August 1 deadline to file a final appeal. And they all said, how can a person file their appeal accurately and have any success if they don't have the valid numbers? So we are not getting that. Pat Tobin said we are not getting those numbers until next year. That is after the appeal. So I'm willing to talk with any one of you about my comments with these other assessors, or I actually ask you to call Beaver, Monroe, Mercer, Tioga, and Schuuk Hill to find out who's telling the truth here. Is it Pat Tobin, or is it me? So all you have to do is make some phone calls and find out what transparency they have and what we don't. If we don't have transparency, we don't have fairness, and we don't have an equitable reassessment. I do want to say one thing to the library. Thank you very much for that. I think that's a wonderful thing. I didn't know about it. But I would suggest that Lackawanna County make a notation online about what's available at the library to help people, and maybe if the newspapers could do that too. I think that'd be great. People don't know. And the other issue I have too is what I'm finding out is Pat Tobin kept saying, land is land. I went to three of these public meetings. Land is land. Could not figure out or get him to move past that, like what that meant. Our county is totally controlled by zoning ordinances. It's in the county plan. It's in all of the townships, boroughs, everything. Zoning. Your zoning of your land is part of your valuation of your land. It dictates the use and the value of that land. So I did find out that what we are doing here is giving a set amount of price per square feet, acre, throughout the whole county, irregardless of what that land is zoned. So if you are, if there's conservation land, if it's agricultural land, residential land, it is going to be the same square footage or acreage as something like Keystone Landfill, the multi-billion dollar world's largest gas plant. So somebody who has their kids in the backyard with their playground, that little playground in their backyard with their swings is going to be assessed as the same land, per square foot or acreage, as Keystone Landfill, the Asai Gas Plant. These are heavy industrial zone land. Now, you can't put a landfill in a residential area or a commercial, or even a commercial area, or obviously conservation, so agricultural. So who's hurting here? Your farmers, which I think, you know, is very important to have in our county, and then we have the residential land. So even for people that have apartment buildings, what about the elderly? They may not own that building, but they're going to have their prices increased because the people that own it are going to have no choice but to increase all of that rent. So this is really a big deal, and it's flying under the radar. We're getting not truthful statements from Pat Tobin, so I really think you should... Don't listen to me. Go call all the people I called. Find out how those other counties did it, and why are they doing it? So a person can file the appropriate appeal and know that their land is taxed, whether it's residential, agricultural, just like heavy industrial. That's insanity. Just give up our whole zoning system if you're going to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Ma'am?
Hi, Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. The gentleman here spoke of senior citizens, and our county is one of the largest county that has a higher population of seniors. Yet, we are in the middle of a few of our hospitals being shut down, and I would advocate for our county commissioners to have a voice with most specifically Mercy and Moses Taylor Hospitals that right now are almost on a chopping block. Healthcare and hospitalization is vital, and I just would hope that our county would have a voice and help our seniors, myself included, to have the best healthcare and hospital opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is, okay, there we start it. So I missed the morning today. I wanted to be here earlier, but obviously I don't work here, so I really shouldn't have to do this. have to do this. So, I didn't hear what everybody had to say this morning before you voted. And the same thing happened last week because I had to work in the morning. And I went back and watched the meeting, and I went through these numbers, and thank you, PJ, for asking that, because I was going through the numbers and I was like, something's not adding up here. What is going on with this? So, I appreciate you asking those questions. Still not real sure on that one, but I'll look at it again, because I was going to ask the same thing, basically. However, I did ask about the Arts Department and the library. I looked at the library funds, and I'm still not sure why they would have to cut services because there's things there that they didn't have last time that they do now. But what's really upsetting me is what Mr. Belzoni said last week. And Joan had asked him a question about this comment he made in the legislative cover sheet, including the Government Center as an asset initiative is questionable. Well, brick and mortar is always an asset. That was a stupid comment. But his statement was, after he came up and answered all the questions about Phase 1, Phase 2, which some of these projects were already underway when I was a commissioner, we voted on them. So, that's why I was looking at that refinance. I was like, we already had this voted on for financing. Why are they doing it again? And now I kind of understand what PJ was asking, what the answer came about. But he said, and there's been many statements made about this building and the problems with it, he said that there were sprinklers that were not attached down on the first floor. Now, Donnie was here, Tracy was here, Gary was here, our Chief of Staff was here. We paid Scranton, the city of Scranton, $195,000, wasn't it, for their occupancy permit? And...
It was two something.
Well, after, with the two different permits. I was getting to that, too. So, it was over $200,000 for them to come in, and we actually were rejected, I think, three times before we were able to move in here, which tied us up. So, what Mr. Belzoni is saying is that somehow their city was not inspecting our building correctly, if they left sprinklers that were not attached. So, I'd like the answer to how that happened, first of all. And we have GPI here, we have Quandell, we had John Palumbo. You mean to tell me that these people all were incompetent in their jobs? I'd like to know who's at fault for something like that, and if that's true, Donnie, we need to look into that as a county, because they need to be held accountable for that. That was a serious accusation, and it better... And was it sabotage? Because there was a lot of sabotage into this building, too, where they put the mop heads into the sewer and had them backing up. And they came in here and vandalized the building. And then, old pipes, by the way, don't equate to sewers backing up. Just because you have an old pipe doesn't mean it backs up. That is a ridiculous statement. So, yeah, I want to know, because if you guys don't file a lawsuit on behalf of the county, I will personally, because none of that should have happened, and we paid for that. And there was no cap on safety in this building. I don't know what that even means. So, I would like answers to all this, and I would like answers to his commentary on that, and what other further issues he said he had that weren't done up to code or up to standard. Because we had many people that were paid for to make sure that it was, and that includes his city of Scranton, where he was employed at the time, and we paid their office for all those. And before I agreed to do this with, to consolidate, we had every single part of this building checked and all the warranties up to date and up to code and standard for that timeframe, because I wouldn't have voted on it if we didn't. And I have all the written facts on that and the meetings for that. So, I saved everything. They're not going to say that we came into this building without the warranties being intact. And diversified, had sprinklers in here, and they had a program in here, they had all paper. They had to put steel beams, extra steel beams, on the first, second, and third floor here for the weight, and they had all those humidity and all that stuff taken care of for alarms and anything that got wet, that took care of all those problems. And that was up to, that was in warranty. And I hate coming here talking about this because there's more in this budget that needs to be talked about. But I feel like I'm a babysitter anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Suzanne Green, Benton Township, Lackawanna County. Last week, when I was here, I did ask for the average of the ratio increase for the reassessment countywide. I had done my own sampling, so I'd like to know if you have received that from Mr. Tobin or from Tyler Technologies. So, if you could address that issue, that would be great. I will reiterate, one of the samplings that I had done, I'm doing a more complete sampling countywide, but the sampling that I completed for average homes in Troop was the pre-assessment assessed values, or the 1968 values, which were on the 2024 tax statements, averaged about $4,100 for the average homes, and the reassessed values were up to about $158,000. If we looked at the very large property that is KSL, Keystone Landfill, it comprises about 18 parcels in Troop and Dunmore Borough. You look at the average increase for Troop residents, which was 3,850%. Apply that same 3,850% to the 1.2 million that is the KSL's assessed value for 2024. It comes to $4,620,000. So, in order to make sure that we have a fair, equitable reassessment, we want to trust you, we want to trust, but we want to verify. That's not an uncommon notation to think about. Trust, but verify. We need to know that this is fair, that it's equitable, and then it needs to be transparent. And to echo what Sharon had stated, Sharon spoke personally with other assessment teams in other counties. These folks were open and honest with her. They said their priority was transparency, and they provided it to their citizens. So, why aren't we providing this transparency to our citizens? Do we not believe in transparency? Because I know you do. So, what's the reason? I know that you've stated that you believe in transparency. You believe in fairness. You believe in an equitable reassessment. So, provide it to our citizens of Lackawanna County. What's the holdup? What is the holdup with providing transparency? I don't know. You know. I hope you provide transparency. My goal is to keep asking until we have transparency. Sharon will continue to look and find other counties, which it appears to be every county we speak to provides transparency. Every single one. Every single other county provides transparency to its citizens. Why isn't Lackawanna County providing transparency? And in that same thing, School Hill County is almost at the exact same level of their reassessment as Lackawanna County. They are sending out the new valuation sheets, and as I had stated last week, their new valuation sheets provide details for their citizens, including the old value, the old tax, the new value, and the estimated new tax. If they can provide the estimated new tax, why can't we? Why are we saying to our citizens, "You won't know your new taxes until next year, when we figure it out"? You know what? It's not rocket science. It's accounting. It's actually simplistic accounting. And I'm positive, like I stated last week, I'm positive the folks in your departments, one, have the tools, knowledge, experience, intelligence to figure these things out. I'm 100% positive. They are professionals. They 100% can provide it to you and to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
Hi, my name is Brian Foley. I'm a resident of Lackawanna County in Music. Regarding the reassessment, so people have been mailed out the values. Is that going to be public knowledge at some point? Because the current assessed values are on a website, so... And I don't know if you can answer questions or not, but do we know when the new assessed values will be on a public website that people can look at and compare to other properties, too?
It'll be next year, correct? Once the... So, you got mailed out your tentative valuation, and then you have the opportunity to go to an informal appeal process to try to correct anything that you feel has not been done correctly. And then, if you still don't agree with the valuation, the final valuation, then you have a chance to appeal that. And then, once all that is settled, then next year, at some point, and I think January, everyone will be able to see everyone's values.
Gotcha. And I think I had heard, maybe, is it the commercial values, commercial assessment values that might be holding up?
There is no...
No.
Gotcha. Because I know the residential's are decided. Are the commercial property values also decided?
Yes. Well, they're not, they're not final. There's no finality to this yet because they can also be appealed as well.
Gotcha. All right, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business. Commissioner Chirmak?
Thank you. Well, Michelle took off already, but as far as hospitals go, we've been very heavily involved with our local state reps and senators to do everything we possibly can to keep these hospitals open, potential new buyers and everything else that's going on. So, we are on top of that as much as we possibly can be, because we do not want to see any hospitals shut down. As far as the library, I do want to thank you. That's awesome that you're doing that for our residents. That was a great idea to give them some help, because it is very confusing. So, you know, take advantage of that if anybody needs any assistance in their reassessment. I talked about this last week. Now, as a matter of fact, this morning, I did receive something from School Hill County, a sample of what they're doing. Now, their, I think their company is Vision Government Solutions. Their preliminary value notifications that get mailed out have current assessed values of what they are now, and the preliminary new assessed values. They also give you your current taxes and your preliminary estimate of what your taxes will be. Also, on this statement that is mailed to all the property owners is your Clean and Green Assessment. So, if you're in the Clean and Green Program, it gives you your values of what your taxes are and what they will be. So, it is much more informative than what, certainly what I received as far as my own property. So, it gives you a little more information, but most importantly, it gives you your estimated taxes, so, which is critical, because that is what everyone is afraid of. They're afraid of what they don't know and what they're going to possibly receive next year, and once they receive their bill, they have to pay it. So, I will be reaching out to School Hill County to see what other things they have in place. I talked about last week... Well, first, today, I think, is the last day. Correct me if I'm wrong, to apply for your informal hearing. Is today the last day you can apply? So, if you need to, do it immediately. If something happens, contact me. If I can help you try to get an appointment, I'll help you. But going back to what I was saying about School Hill, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. There's other counties doing this. My concern is safeguards in place for elderly and people on fixed incomes. We don't have them. I want to know what School Hill County in particular, what they're doing. You know, Mrs. Smith down the street, living on $11,000 a year, that's been in her house for 60-plus years, or whatever the number is, can't afford a penny more. So, we don't want to force her out of her home. So, I want to know what they are doing. There's possible ways to freeze their taxes. There's all different kinds of things that other counties do already. To me, that has to be put in place before this is initialized. And I mentioned last week about slowing the process down. I still think that we need to make sure that these numbers are accurate, correct, and fair. We can't move forward until these things are correct. I'm still receiving things every day in my email, different horror stories and different people, what they're receiving and what they're getting told. Two commercial properties that I know of, one in Dalton, a property that has no structures on it, it's in a flood plain. I would estimate the value, I know the property owner paid about $35,000 for it, maybe that's what it's worth, $2.8 million it was appraised at, a little, just a little bit off in my book. There's a dentist's office in Southside, in an area probably, I don't know, the building may be worth $150,000 to $200,000. $2.1 million they're appraised at. That's another one that's a little, just a little off, if you ask me. So, the list goes on and on and on, and I understand that there'll be issues, and there'll be questions, and there'll be things that have to be corrected, but it has to be corrected before we move forward. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to figure out everything before we move forward, make sure there's safeguards in place, and make sure nobody loses their homes. So, thank you. And happy Easter, everyone.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, again, we'll address reassessment, just to correct a few things. So, hey, this is just my personal opinion. I disagree respectfully with Commissioner Chirmak on a few points. Number one, yes, people are, do have a certain level of fear, and I do believe that's because a reassessment has not been conducted since 1968. That's 57 years ago. So, when something is not done for that period of time, there will always be a level of uncertainty and fear. What I don't appreciate is what I think Commissioner Chirmak is doing, which is capitalizing on people's fear and trying to make them more scared. There is nothing to be scared about. There are safeguards in place. There are, in fact, one of them was Commissioner Chirmak signed off on it. Now, it's very narrow, but it is a reassessment relief initiative, which was signed, I believe, back in November of 2023, the Lackawanna County Reassessment Relief Initiative. And I won't go through the whole thing, but that is on our website. There's also, for, in our Tax Cane Bureau, there's an elderly payment deferment. There's real estate tax exemptions for veterans and other programs, which I've talked to Barb Linnity about. But the idea that people should be reaching out to Commissioner Chirmak and expressing the fact that they don't agree with their valuation, that's great, but there's a process in place where if you don't agree with your tentative valuation, you go to the informal appeal. So, I hope that people, if they don't agree, that's great if you reach out to Commissioner Chirmak, but there is a process in place. And if it is wildly inflated, as he is saying, which might be the case, that's when you go and you bring proof of pictures of your property and other information, and then that gets ironed out. And if you still don't agree with it, then there's a third layer. You can appeal it this summer. So, there, there is a process in place. It's not, I just don't like how there's, I think we're trying to, not, not me, but Commissioner Chirmak is trying to capitalize on people's fears. I don't necessarily agree with that. That's why you file the informal appeal, and then if you don't agree with that, that's why, why you file the appeal. Look, there's reassessments that go on all over the country every year. We have unfortunately not had one in 57 years. This is about fairness. I didn't vote for the reassessment. Neither did Commissioner Chirmak. I wasn't here when it went on. But I just want to make sure people understand that it doesn't matter if you voted for it or if you didn't vote for it. As Attorney Price was sitting in the back, who was filling in for Don Frederickson last week, one of our solicitors explained, "The court issued an order forcing the county to conduct a reassessment." Why did they do that? Because a group of taxpayers came forward and said, "Hey, this isn't fair. We're being overtaxed. There are people in our community who are not paying their fair share because the values are from 1968." So, they came forward... So they came forward and they sued, and they were going to win. There's case law on the books, as Attorney Price explained last week. And so the county was going to be forced to do it. So it doesn't matter whether anyone's for or against it. And the other thing I just want to talk about, where I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Chirmak, is the idea that we can slow this down. I have checked with Director Tobin. I talked to our chief of staff this morning and our solicitor. We can't, there is no opportunity to slow this down. We have to get everything done by June 1st, correct? And then we have to, Tyler Technologies, who's doing the reassessment, hands everything over to the county. And then we have to get that done by, I believe, October or November?
Halloween.
Halloween. Right. So there's no opportunity to say, "Whoa, let's pump the brakes on this thing." There's a court order that we have to follow and we have to get it done. And the county has spent almost $5.5 million to conduct this process. So again, if you're concerned, if you have questions, that's when you call our assessment office. That's where you deal with the professionals who know what they're talking about, and you talk to Tyler, and you go through the informal appeal process if you haven't already, and then you can appeal that if you don't agree with it. So there are processes in place. But the idea that we can slow it down or stop it, that's just not, there's no fact involved in that, and that's just not going to happen. Just a couple of other things. The National Drug Endangered Children Awareness Day is next Wednesday, April 23rd. So I'd ask that everyone please join the Lackawanna County DA's office and Lackawanna County DEC Alliance in raising awareness of how substantive use affects the children in our community, and please wear red to work on Wednesday, April 23rd. We have a prison board meeting coming up later today, and I know that we talk all the time about the tax increase and the county's finances, and quite frankly, the devastating financial situation that I walked into last year upon becoming a commissioner. We have made strides, and we are going to get on the other side of this financial disaster that I inherited. And one small example, but it's a big example, that I'd like to explain to people is tackling overtime costs. One of the things that we put a great emphasis on last year was how do we control overtime? And the big issue was at the prison and the sheriff's office. Well, I have the amounts here from this year, since we made some very necessary moves to control overtime, and I'm really happy to report that it's working. So very briefly, 2023, in the first payroll period, $116,772 in overtime. 2024, $119,844 in overtime. Once we implemented what we said we were going to do, which is control costs, this first pay period in 2025, $41,320.
Next up.
Thank you. Second pay period, $84,000 in 2023, $94,000 in 2024. This year, $38,710. And I could go all the way down the line here. The numbers are really striking. And this, not just me doing this, this is our warden and other officials at the prison and within this building, when we said, "Look, we have to get these costs under control." And I'm really, really am happy to say that it's working. When we talk about reassessment and we talk about relief and programs, I have called for a meeting at the end of April so that we can investigate the process of allowing people to pay county taxes in installments starting in 2026. As most of you probably know, this is currently done for the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District real estate taxes. So if you live in the city of Scranton, you are allowed to pay your city taxes in installments and your school district taxes in installments. Your first payment's due by March 31st, second payment's due by June 30th, third payment's due by August 29th, and the fourth payment is due by October 31st. So what I have asked the people who work here is, and our tax collector, who I talked to yesterday, Kathy Wechsler, can we do that in the county? Right now, you have to pay your county taxes all at once. So that is being investigated. I think it would be very beneficial if people were allowed to pay in installments. I think it makes sense. And also, I've talked to our CFO about it, in terms of cash flow, provide a level of stability for us as well, which has occurred in the city. So we're looking into that, and hopefully that'll be an initiative that is unveiled in 2026. Finally, I just want to speak briefly, but directly and honestly with the people that we serve here in Lackawanna County about the very real and very damaging impact that President Trump's proposed cuts to the federal workforce and federal programs and grants could have on our county government and communities throughout Lackawanna County. Now, I don't bring this up to get political. I bring it up because as a county commissioner, I am extremely concerned about what may be coming down the pike, and I feel an obligation to all of you to let you know that there's great possibility that we are in grave danger here. So over the past several months, we've seen renewed calls and action from Donald Trump and his allies in Congress to slash the size of the federal workforce, to eliminate entire agencies, and drastically reduce funding for vital public programs. I want to remind people that these aren't just numbers on a page. These cuts could have direct and devastating consequences for county governments like ours in Lackawanna. Federal programs help fund essential county services. We get a lot of our funding from state government, but a lot of that funding trickles down from the federal government, whether it's from human services to housing, infrastructure to education, veteran services, and nutrition assistance. If those programs are cut or they're gutted, we will eventually be left with an impossible choice, either try to fill the gap with the limited resources and revenue that we have here in the county, or let services decline and let our residents suffer. These cuts could mean fewer resources for our drug and alcohol department, our behavioral health department. We talked a week and a half, two weeks ago to Barb Durkin, who's in charge of our drug and alcohol department and is also the director of our human services department. She has very real concerns. Fewer resources throughout our library system, which at a staff meeting two weeks ago, talked to Sandy Longo about, and what I really wasn't even aware of is indirectly, it could be devastating to the people who use our library system because of cuts that Trump is making to different programs throughout the federal government. Fewer grants for road and bridge repairs, less funding for heating assistance, I believe he wiped out or cut almost that entire department. Food programs that thousands of our residents rely on each winter. They could mean less support for job training and workforce development programs that help our people get ahead. In fact, the president has pledged to implement what is known as Schedule F, which is a policy he began at the end of his first term, and he promised to revive, which he's doing now. And this policy would reclassify tens of thousands of federal workers as at-will employees, allowing for mass firings based on political loyalty rather than merit or service. So you might be asking, what does that have to do with county government? Well, this would gut institutional knowledge across federal agencies and politicize those positions that are supposed to be nonpartisan, from health experts at the CDC to staff at the EPA, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And with the threats to the federal workforce, we, as county commissioners and the people that work in this building, risk losing the institutional knowledge and capacity that county governments often depend on for technical guidance and program delivery. And I'll just give you a few examples. Housing and urban development. President's repeatedly proposed, along with his allies in Congress, to slash the community development block grant program. Now, today, you saw our Director of Economic Development get up and talk about some of the great things that we're doing with that funding throughout communities in Lackawanna County. Affordable housing, infrastructure upgrades, we talked about replacing sidewalks and stormwater, things like that. Support services for low-income residents. If CDBG is fully eliminated, as Trump is seeking to do, it would devastate our ability as commissioners to serve vulnerable families. The Department of Agriculture, they want to cut the supplemental nutrition assistance program, which helps thousands of our residents in Lackawanna County, including working families and seniors, put food on their table. His proposed cuts to school meal programs would harm our children directly. It has an inadvertent effect on area agency on aging, and all the people that come through the doors here for, in terms of our human services department, our Office of Youth and Family Services, 68% of children in Lackawanna County are on free and reduced lunch, free and reduced breakfast in our school districts throughout the county. This has a direct effect on them. We're going to be seeing more of those people coming through our doors if these cuts go through. 31% cut to the Environmental Protection Agency, threatening programs that monitor water quality, address abandoned mine sites, which we have an awful lot of in Lackawanna County, and provide grants to improve air and water safety in communities like ours. One of the ones that is really concerning me is potential cuts to the women infant and children nutrition, the WIC program, assistance for after-school and summer programs for kids. Again, you may be saying, how does that affect county government? Those low-income kids and those families, they come through our doors. When I went out with the caseworker in the Office of Youth and Family Services, I met a lot of those families and a lot of those children. So that's going to have an effect on our county. Also, there was an article that was written, "The National Association of Counties," which we are, Lackawanna County is a member of, and in fact, Maureen McGuigan, who got up before, does a lot with NACO in terms of arts and culture. "There's a huge concern over proposed changes to Medicaid financing requirements following recent proposals that would enact significant cuts to Medicaid." Again, how does that affect county government? They wrote to the federal government, expressing concern over the proposed changes to Medicaid financing and requirements that would significantly impact state and local budgets, healthcare infrastructure, and millions of Americans who rely on the program, and thousands of people who are in Lackawanna County who rely on the program. And they go to say, and I quote, "It covers 38 million children, funds 40% of all births, supports rural hospitals, and is the largest payer of long-term care and behavioral health services. Policy changes that mandate specific eligibility requirements and changes in the fiscal makeup of the program threaten Medicaid's effectiveness and reduce state flexibility in program design." Here's the important part. "Such changes have costly implications, leading significant coverage losses for beneficiaries and increased medical debt with unclear long-term savings. For example, reducing the 90% federal match for Medicaid expansion could cut federal spending by $561 billion over nine years, forcing states to either drop expansion or absorb higher costs, jeopardizing coverage for millions and harming state economies. Likewise, proposals such as per capita caps or block grants that do not account for increases in health costs or fluctuations in enrollment would shift financial risks to states and to counties." And anybody who's been paying attention knows the financial problems that we've been having in the county. This would make it 20 times worse. Proposed cuts to the CDC and the Department of Health and Human Services, it will limit our ability to coordinate with federal partners in the event, like happened during the pandemic, if we have to distribute vaccines, and actually will have an effect on our opioid addiction response. Transportation, they've repeated, Trump has repeatedly proposed deep cuts to Amtrak and the Department of Transportation grant programs. That, for us, could mean fewer dollars for road and bridge repairs and a threat to efforts to restore passenger rail service, which is a goal that has been worked on here for a number of years. I could go on and on and on and on and on and on. The reason I'm bringing this up is because all, and you just quoted, "The National Association of Counties." At a time when counties across the United States, including ours, are still recovering from years of financial strain, these aren't just budgetary decisions, these are values decisions. And we cannot sit back as county commissioners, while Donald Trump and his allies in Congress threaten the services that keep our people safe, healthy, and supported. Now, I have, as a commissioner, have always believed in the value of public service, even when I was on city council, and also believed in taking care of working families, seniors, children, and veterans. And what I've seen that has been done to the Veterans Affairs Department in our government and the slashes and cuts there is, could potentially have an indirect effect on the things we do in our local veterans' office. So I will continue to fight for those values. I'll do everything in my power to shield our residents from the fallout of these reckless cuts and these ideological crusades, but I would urge you to continue to call our local legislators, Congressman Breznerhan, Senator McCormick, and Senator Fetterman, and beg them to stop the madness that is going on. It will, if it all goes through and everything they say they're going to do is done with this DOGE department and all the chaos they've caused, it eventually will arrive at our doorstep. It already has in many ways, but it'll only, only get worse. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second question, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned. Hope everyone has a happy Easter. Thank you.